At this time, we will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Special welcome to the participants in the Emerging Leadership Program. This is a program that's a partnership between the Southwest Initiative Foundation and University of Minnesota Extension. So, welcome to the participants that are here. Welcome to everyone else here, too. So, we do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be considered the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting as well as a work session. Both were held on July 23rd. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move approval.
Second.
Steve, seconded by Craig, to approve the minutes as they have been presented. Approval of minutes don't require discussion, so we will move immediately to a vote, and we vote electronically. I want to close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the public hearing. This is a public hearing, a continuation of the July 9, 2024, public hearing for the purpose of the consideration of the assessment of the property for which we had one objection at that time. So, the continuation is for the discussion on that one objection of Derek Deitz's property. Derek is present in the meeting this evening. So, we will reconvene. This is public hearing, and I will ask Director of Public Works City Engineer Jason Anderson to conduct this reconvene public hearing. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, then we will consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give a brief introduction to this property's assessment. I can go through the proposed charges. There's four blocks of costs that make up the total. The total assessment is $39,716.78. Of that total, $21,312.02 is streetscaping costs on Third Street, charged by the front foot. All costs were aggregated and charged by the front foot at 20% of actual cost. The street assessment is $13,675.32. The special assessment policy limits the street assessment to that number. Without any limitation, the actual assessment would have been $45,514 for the street portion. But with the limits in place, it's just over $13,000. The sanitary sewer service line was assessed at a cost of $2,780.62. And the roof drain, storm sewer drainage for the building, was assessed at a cost of $1,948.80. It is city staff's recommendation to maintain the assessment per our policy. We did work with the -- on this particular property, we were working with the prior property owner, and we did have general consensus with these assessments. But this property was purchased after the project was awarded. So, the current owner -- we did not work with Mr. Deitz, who's now the current owner. We did not work with him as a property owner. While he was at a lot of the meetings to discuss the project as a business owner, we did not discuss the assessment with him in great detail prior to his ownership. With that, I think I'll turn it over for input or discussion at this point, but I can answer any more questions as they arise.
Okay. We're in public hearing, so either Derek, if you have comments you want to make, or any member of the council wants input as part of this public hearing. And Derek, for the record, give your name and your address.
Derek Deitz, 256 West Main Street in Marshall here. Thank you, Mary Burns, and members of the City Council. Today, I'm petitioning to reduce my assessment of $39,716 by $15,392 and a grand total of This 38% reduction was figured by taking the current annual property tax of $1,924 times eight years, which is the current pay period of this assessment at 5.27% interest. I see this as a fair reduction in assessment because we do not want -- we didn't want this much streetscaping on the side of our building for multiple reasons as a business owner when we were discussing this project. One reason was the elimination of the prime access and parking to our building, and two was the amount of usage this patio will see throughout the year. The success of this patio relies heavily on our business to expand into a bistro and maintain it year-round. Last year, it didn't receive any snow removal by the city, and I've been cleaning waste off the pavement this year because there are missing aspects of the project, such as trash cans, fixtures, that were supposed to be incorporated into the project. Other than maintaining a large patio year-round, we must invest well over $150,000 to renovate the building into a functioning bistro. With the purchase of this building last year, we are not expecting -- we were not expecting this high of an assessment, and it has placed another hurdle in our process of making this into a bistro. With the reduction of $15,392 on this assessment, it assures us that our property taxes are going to good use, and it greatly relieves our burden of investing in a small business in downtown Marshall. Large businesses that invest in Marshall get great incentives, and small businesses in Marshall should expect the same. We want to make downtown Marshall and Third Street shine, and would greatly appreciate some relief as this has already become a challenging endeavor. Thanks for hearing my petition today, and I hope you take my perspective into consideration.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Input from the council as part of the public hearing?
We -- Craig and I are involved in many meetings. I respect -- and I completely respect your opinion, Derek. The issue I have, though, is the previous building owner wanted this, and he actually petitioned the city to increase it to this because we had scaled this project back. And that's who we listened to because at that time, Mr. Mullerbrook and his partner, which his name escapes me, owned the building, and this is what they wanted. So, it's not necessarily fair to the other taxpayers to say, "Now, we're going to give a reduction to Derek because he bought the building." But this was their vision of it. The majority property owner, this was his vision of the project, and he agreed to pay for it. The agreements that you and Brad made on the sale of the building, that's irrelevant to the city or the discussion that they had on it. And that's -- I will support the city's position on it because of the agreement that was made between Brad and the city at the time.
And I'd like to add to that, too, and I feel the same, Derek. And I know you were very clear about what your wishes and your, I guess, desire not to have the streetscape done, and you were very clear about that, and I appreciate that. But again, like Councilmember Luzinski said, we, you know, we met and took a lot of input from both Brad and the other business people. There was a lot of, I guess I want to say, excitement and buy-in to doing something special with Third Street, and we did. And I mean, I really feel bad where you're at with this, but in honest, in all fairness, with this far into it, we can't -- if we open up yours and adjust, in fairness, we have to adjust everybody's, and that's not what our policy is, to do that on ad valorem, you know, to put it on everybody else's taxes. We actually looked to see if there were other open grants that we had with the downtown to encourage you to maybe go somewhere else, but I find, I mean, there's nothing right now open that we can help feed that another way either. So, I mean, I really appreciate where you're at and feel bad about it, but again, our policy needs to be -- we really need to set for the whole, and this is really kind of a trap, and it's unfortunate that it wasn't some part of your agreement with Brad when you did the purchase. I don't know -- I don't know what a good remedy is here because it's fair to you isn't fair to the others, and, you know, it's really a hard spot. There's no win in this. I think hopefully somewhere down, and of course, hope's not a plan, you know, but hopefully somewhere down there that enhanced Third Street does pay dividends for you and that it is a positive part of the business, and I understand your position on it now. But I really feel, as a council member, our hands are tied with where we go with this. I mean, I think for due diligence, we have to stay with our policy.
Well, and Derek, you'd mentioned you wanted to do some remodeling on the store. The city still has a business tax abatement program for small businesses. Lauren's not here to give the whole work how that goes, but if you do remodel your store, maybe Sharon can help you. There is a business property tax abatement program still in the city of Marshall that can help out financially with that, but I don't want to get too deep into it because I don't know all the details. Lauren Deitz would be a good on her share, and if you're looking at remodeling, there is some incentive to do that. So, that's something you have to visit with the EDA director or the city administrator on.
Right. Other input on the topic of the public hearing?
I guess --
Go ahead, Derek.
Before you close, yeah, I guess it was, I don't know, it just seems like not a lot of people are really satisfied with this project. It's too much space. It's a big open lot that we're going to use for five times out of the year. I feel like there should be at least picnic tables, four or five picnic tables out there yet. There still needs to be trash cans installed. They're so, I mean, right now, it's a waste of space, and if I don't invest a couple hundred thousand dollars and get in this building and to where we want it to serve its purpose, I mean, yeah, it's just going to be wasted space. So, I understand your perspective where your hands are tied, but at least take into consideration for finding grant funding for the city and small businesses that are trying to improve the quality of life around here, where, yeah, it's just been very tough to find any sort of support that way. I guess it's in your guys' hands. I just wanted to make my point here today, and that's it.
Thank you, Derek. Jason, you have some comments?
Yes, Mayor. With regard to the piece that Derek brought up regarding trash and recycling receptacles and benches, I do believe we have at least one additional bench and set of receptacles that, with the council's blessing, I could work directly with Derek to identify a good spot on the plaza near his business there where we could get those sighted. When the plaza area was done late last year, and we were placing some of those, we wanted to be careful as city staff to not put too much stuff down that's quasi-permanent until we saw how that started to be used because it's all fixed to the concrete. We didn't want to put a bunch of holes in the concrete and start to tarnish its surface before we figured it out. So, I can check with Dean Kudron and see where those are placed. I'm pretty sure we have a bench similar to the ones that are out there now and receptacles similar as well that we could place up near the intersection somewhere where it fits.
Good.
And one thing, Derek, too, just as a point, and I don't want to get off on too much of a tangent here, but I appreciate your comment about investing in the small business and the community. And I know that part of the discussion, and this is for sure like Councilmember Luzinski and I focus really hard, all of Main Street is in our district. It's in our ward. And, you know, at least the downtown business portion is all Ward 3. And we've worked really hard to try to make sure that we invest in Main Street and in those -- I call it kind of the heritage zone is what I have it in mind, and that's really what I had in my mind when we were talking about Third Street and doing the things there is to give it an appeal that's unusual and not the normal kind of bland. And I think it started when they did the Main Street project years ago to try to change the look and improve, and it's what we try to do with the facade grants and just to try to help things along. And we know it's not a lot that we can do to help in the big picture of how much you invest when you do your investments in your business and in your building, but we do want to be a partner in that. So, we do take that serious, and even though this isn't going to go the way he wanted it to go, to ask, please don't stop bringing those forward and being involved in that because we do care about that part of it, and we've tried to create a strong community feeling, and it focuses around downtown. And it's one of the investments we made with City Hall here to keep it on Main Street, to keep invested in that and not have an open hole. And even when we had to do the work between here and the coffee shop with the hotel, we didn't want that to just be an open bare lot. We tried to turn it into something that does get used and creates another atmosphere that makes people want to come downtown and be downtown. So, hopefully, we can continue to work with that, and if you have plans for yours, that we can help be part of that in support with the city. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Any other input as part of this public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I saw move.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Now, before you, is the resolution that would adopt the assessment specific to this property?
I saw move.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 3, Consider the Authorization to Purchase a 48-Foot Shelter from Flagship Recreation. I'll ask Preston Stinchrood, Parks Director, to come forward to present this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight will be kind of the first step of a few in doing some improvements at Independence Park. You guys may recall, back in 2023, we applied and were awarded an outdoor recreation grant through the Minnesota DNR, just under $211,000 from the DNR, and then we have a one-to-one match, which makes our total project of a new bathroom, new shelter, some electrical improvements, concrete, all that stuff, somewhere in the neighborhood of $420,000. This first part that we'd like to do, I checked with a couple different vendors. Ultimately, Flagship Recreation hosts the state contract from Icon Shelters. And we'd like to, and I talked with a couple local contractors, if there's any opportunity to kind of engineer this out locally, but they said there's no way to compete with a company that's already selling engineered buildings specifically of this size. So, it's a 48-foot diameter, same size as what we have there. If you guys have been there, it's all glue-lam timber construction. Most of the columns have bird nests and are rotting away to the point of no repair. And then it just kind of dated from it all being a wood structure. So, this is just kind of a glimpse of what it would look like, not in our necessarily colors or anything, but the underside would be all tongue-and-groove finished wood to help alleviate with bird nesting and stuff, which is a problem now. And then we'd have to add one between two columns would be some kind of a serving counter we might do out of brick, and then with like stainless steel countertop, similar to what we're doing in our other shelter houses that are just rectangular or more standard-shaped. So, I'd like to purchase, get this shelter ordered and coming. It's 12-week lead time. And then work with local contractors on the installation and footings and electrical work that will need to be done once it gets here. All of the bidding for, from the labor side, will need to be prevailing wage as part of the contract with the DNR. So, yeah, just asking for authorization to get this ordered from Flagship Recreation. Can't remember the exact dollars, but $72,000, I think it was. And I have that kind of broken down there. So, you see the state discount, the state contract discount, then you got shipping, and then you have to purchase the engineered stamped drawings, which I have shared with Ray and Ilya, kind of the pre-fabbed ones, and everything looks good there, but we'll get an actual set that'll help with installation and construction. And then I'll come back to council with probably one bid package to construct the new bathroom, block bathroom, and then install insulation of the shelter in a month or so.
Removal as a current structure?
Yep. We'll try and do that, not in like with a general contract. We'll just work with a couple excavation companies and have this down just prior to the new one arriving, so.
Okay. So, this will go on the footprint of the current one?
Essentially, yep. We don't know. We don't have any drawings of what's there for footings or anything, so I don't think -- and these posts would be poured into the concrete where now you see all the nuts and bolts sticking out. We won't have any of that, so it'll be a lot cleaner look, so. But essentially, real similar.
Steve?
So, with the grant, the actual fiscal impact to the city will be $36,258.5.
Yep, for this.
For this portion.
Portion, and then 50% of the cost of install and the bathroom, up to a maximum of like $210,400.
Is this budgeted for, Preston?
Yep. We actually had like $195 in 2023's budget for it, and then we have that extra $39,000 or something in 2024's budget, so.
Other questions?
So, the total cost of the shelter here is about $157, according to our package?
They, this company, which I'll allow them to bid on it, too, put together an installation price, that quote you see. But I talked with two local contractors, and both thought we could get it done more reasonably locally.
That makes sense.
But I'll still allow them to, if they turn in a price and they're low, we'll go with them, but want to give the locals an option, too, so.
Any other questions?
This is a wood structure now, not steel again?
All steel.
This is all steel?
All steel, yep.
Life expects you 60 years, 70?
Yeah, they said 50 plus, if it's well-maintained, so.
Because the old one is 40-plus, isn't it?
36-ish.
36-ish.
Yeah, the old one, it's 1988.
Yep.
Any other questions for Preston? If not, thank you, Preston, for your work on this, as well as your work on soliciting the grant that supports this. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by C., seconded by Jim for the purchase of the structure for the Independence Park Pavilion. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move now to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include Consider the Approval of the Lawful Gambling Permit for Ducks Unlimited, Consider the Approval of Temporary On-Sale Liquor License for Visit Marshall for Prairie Jam, The Resolution Declaring Property as Surplus and Authorizing the Sale. These are public works items. Consider the Resolution Declaring Tables as Surplus for the Adult Community Center. Consider the amended request for a street closure of Marvin Chuan Memorial Drive for the Arts and Living Festival. The airport removal, snow removal equipment building. We have, once again, one more FAA agreement. I believe, Jason, this is the final agreement?
One more state agreement to come.
Consider the Approval of Temporary Liquor License for SMSU Foundation for an Event September 7. Consider the Approval of Temporary Liquor License for SMSU Foundation for an Event September 21. Consider the Approval of the Bills and the Project Payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of a separate discussion?
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 13, Consider the Resolution Approving the Amendments to the 2024 Fee Schedule. EJ, do you have this, or no?
Carla Drown, Finance Director. The fee schedule annually comes to your attention. However, throughout the year, we may have additions or changes to it. In this situation, we have, staff have requested an administrative citation fee and an electricity hookup fee be added to our current fee schedule of 2024. We brought this to the Ways and Means Committee on May 21, and they have recommended that it come to the council. We do have staff here to explain any questions you may have on either one of those.
Okay. Comments from the Ways and Means Committee?
No, we talked about it.
Okay. Questions the council would have about the fee schedule?
How do you justify $100 per day per vendor for electric hookup? That seems high. And I'm just one that I, as a business owner, I'm sick of fees. That one just seems high. A fee is a tax. It's a hidden tax. So, what is the justification for $100 per day per vendor?
Sure.
I'm going to have Preston explain this a little bit because we just talked about this last week, so he's got the detail.
So, the reasoning for this is because all the special event stuff that we have and where these trailers are hooked up, we have to hook up temporary power panels, which every time we take one up and put one down, we have to have it inspected by the state electrical inspector for $75. Plus, we're out our time to go to get the panel and bring it over there, then have MMU hook it up, then come the next day and unhook it up and haul it and put it away. So, I'd say based on what we're doing, $100 is actually far less than what it should be, but we have to start somewhere.
So, does this pertain to the outlets on Third Street, which are permanent in there?
This would be if you have a special event there. If it's a community event, the fee is waived, but if it's a special private event, then you would have a --
Because there's no inspections on those. They can just plug in.
Nope, but there, we're looking at the side of you have to pay for all of the different structure you had to put in.
But they did that on the assessment, as our gentleman over here is just saying.
Yeah.
I think $100 is too high. I'd be comfortable with $50 per day. I understand there's work into it, but these vendors aren't making a ton of money. We want vendors to show up. We don't want them, all of a sudden, we have these events and says, "Well, we're not making money in Marshall."
Could I add one thing, too, as well?
Go ahead, Jason.
With regard to the street events, there's also costs with city staff, a street department bringing signs, mobilizing in, setting them up, picking them up. There's quite a bit of staff time that does go into running these events. It's even worse if it happens to be on Main Street, and then we need to run the engineering department to put together drawings and submissions to MINDOT and go through their permitting process. You get a lot of hours stacked into it.
But we've been having these special events in Marshall. Crazy days have been going on for 50 years, or we've been setting up signs. The homecoming parade's been going on for, so we've been moving signs for how many years, and now we're going to dump $100 on vendors to justify putting signs up? Again, I'm comfortable charging $50 per event, per vendor.
So, that would be for the electrical outlet hookup that requires a $75 state inspection? So, at $50, we'd be losing?
Yeah, but how many vendors can hook up to that? More than one vendor can hook up to that. You can't have five, six vendors hooked into that.
At like when we have it, I can't speak for so much down here. There's three 50-amp plugins, I think, down here. But like at the park, like at Independence Park, we've probably hooked up a temporary A-frame seven times this summer. We try and kind of limit the vendors, and you can only hook up a maximum of two because of the draw, so.
So, that's $100, that'd cover that inspection fee.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to add, I know we've, Stephen Anderson and I talked to some food truck vendors about this fee and then also the annual fee for food trucks, and I know that they wanted to have a conversation with Ways and Means. So, maybe we give them that opportunity, but we would also, of course, invite some of the other establishments in town, too, who want a fee. I don't look at profit-loss statements. I can tell you, on Juneteenth, they made really good money, and I'm happy for them and for us because we wanted it to be successful. I do think, in addition to some of the street work, it's promoting the event and getting the word out, which either the CBB or the city takes on. So, maybe it's more of a special event food permit, or you characterize it something different than just saying electrical hookup because it is kind of, it isn't just the electrical hookup. There's other work that goes into it. So, I don't know if the council wanted to kick it back to Ways and Means and have a fuller discussion, but that's something to consider, too.
I think these are really good points, and I'm certainly happy to bring it back if the council's wishes are, and we'll talk about it more.
Is that your motion, Steve?
That would be my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Steve, seconded by -- Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to refer this agenda item back to the Ways and Means Committee. Discussion on that motion. And you have the wording of that?
Is this for both fees or just specifically the electrical hookup?
I think it's just electrical.
The electrical hookup, yes.
Because there is the administrative penalty or citation penalty fee.
So can we handle this by electronic vote, or you want this? So we'll move to a vote on the, on the motion that was seconded to refer the electrical panel fee back to Ways and Means. Discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. And we'll now consider the, the remainder of the fee schedule that was, that is included in the resolution.
Can I have, just kind of explain to me, because it says against all ordinance, ordinance says the less otherwise stated. Can I just have that either Pam or Sharon, just explain what you mean by that?
Or Ilya, whoever.
Thank you, Mayor Council. There's, there are several items on the fee schedule already that kind of could go under this one, but we don't want to change them. So that's only applies to those which are not otherwise covered in the fee schedule right now, previously recovered.
So like the new rental ordinance had, and I could be wrong at this, but that had penalties written into it, correct? So that'd be separate of this fee, or this, this new penalty, or fine?
I don't think there are penalties, there are inspection fees in there, so the inspection will stay there.
What's an example of an ordinance that had a fine written into it?
I think.
That'd be otherwise stated.
For example, not mowing the grass.
Okay.
That kind of example.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
I move approval of the amendments to the 2024 fee schedule. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Consider the request to extend a conditional use permit for an advertising sign, which is a billboard, at five-eleven South Highway twenty-three. Ilya Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So this is a request for extension of the conditional use permit that was granted in August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. There was a provision that, that lasts only for one year unless it starts, so it has to be, the construction should have been started within a year. It has not been, and applicant asked for extension, the, the same provision that limits it to one year allows the applicant to ask for extension for the, through the formal process. So they applied one month before, and it comes to the council to approve it. Nothing has changed since the year before, so the recommendation is to approve it now, extension for six months. They said that they're going to start construction sometime in October.
Okay. Questions?
Why have they waited so long to start it? They had a year, they want a billboard, why didn't it?
They didn't provide specific explanation, but I mean, I assume it's the kind of internal things what they could go, I mean, they build a lot of those billboards, so maybe it didn't come to Marshall before.
I know I stated before that I'd like us to take a look at our ordinance for billboards, because they are starting to pop up around town, quite a few of them, and as we talk about how nice Marshall looks, one of the things that makes Marshall look nice is not a ton of billboards. And we don't have any real rules on them, and I know I brought this up last time, I'd like to see this come through soon. I wouldn't mind denying this until we take a look at that ordinance and figure out what we actually want for billboards on an ordinance basis.
I wouldn't want Pam to weigh in on that, but I believe we can't, we need good cause to deny a request for a conditional use permit, and just saying because we're not going to approve this because we want to change the ordinance, we can't do that.
Yeah, the issue here is, is not whether or not to approve the sign, the issue here is whether or not to extend the time. Pam, or Pam is not with us tonight, but someone is in her place.
Good evening, Your Honor. Yeah, Pete Michael, Pam's partner, I think I've sat in with you once before. I am aware of the issue, Pam briefed me on it, and I believe whichever one of you said it is correct. They've met the test, there isn't a legal basis to deny the extension at this time, and certainly an interest in revisiting the ordinance is always open to the council, but that would not be a basis to deny this requested extension.
Thank you, Pete.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ilya or for our attorney?
I move we approve the extension. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Ilya. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Fifteen. This is the Independence Park Parking Lot and Entrance Road Project. We have a change order to consider, this is the final change order, as well as the acknowledgement of the final pay request, and we note for the record that this is a reduction in the total cost of.
My esteemed colleague, Mr. Meister, could, could actually approve this.
I think this is fantastic. I always love when we have reduction of costs, so I'll move to approve this.
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by?
Give it to Jim, he didn't like this project, Sharon.
Not, well, just a comment about the project, the, and for engineering, the, this project, and for parks, Preston isn't here anymore, but the, isn't present in the meeting anymore, but the parking lot and the entrance road really turned out great, so.
It's nice.
So, and it's been well-used, so.
Nobody's parked on the grass either, have they?
Not that we've noticed, Preston might have a different perspective, but.
Other, any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So we'll move then to Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Airport Commission met last week, talked a lot about the ongoing project for the redoing the ILS, right, Instrument Landing System support, and this thing has been going on, I think we have most of the equipment on hand already, right? And it's just waiting for things to move at the speed of state and get it all done, but it's an exciting project, and it sounds like our, our heavy airport users are really eager to have it done. And then we talked just a lot about other things going on at the airport, and just a lot of positive feeling about what's out there. There was no input negative or positive from any of the tenants there, but just a good feeling, you know, some good things have happened. Lockwood's Hanger looks pretty nice, and we know things are moving forward on the SRE, the snow removal equipment building for the city, so seeing some good things happen over the bridge to opportunities, so that's good too, so just a lot of positive. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Craig, I have a quick question, if, sorry, Mr. Mayor, on the Airport Commission. This spring, Enterprise brought up a, a request for a sign, the Talkback Commission, has that been dropped, are they happy, are they?
Go ahead.
The conversation stalled out, I guess, a few months ago. We had some back and forth, there were some requests from Enterprise to have the city pay upfront and kind of run front on collecting money and participation. That was in response to my statement that whatever we come up with with a sign for them might need to be multi-tenant or be able to be stacked on later, and that's where the conversation went, kind of shifted to the city fronting cost, and that's where we, we stalled at that point in time. It's an item that I can pick back up at some point in time at your direction or the Airport Commission's direction, but it's been kind of a silent issue for now.
Thank you.
Any more?
No, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Amanda?
I don't either.
Mine have not met, John?
Nothing.
And Jim?
I have nothing.
We'll move then to individual items. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one thing, and it goes to the, to our audience out there that's listening, you know, we're in that part of the time of the year where all of our hedges and shrubs and bushes are in full swing, and with all the rain we've had, things are growing and looking very healthy. If you have hedges or growth center along the sidewalks, trim them. When you walk now, it's our sidewalks, we pride ourselves in the sidewalks, we have a lot of debate about how we pay for them, who should have them, who shouldn't have them. If you have a sidewalk, not trimming the brush so that you can use the sidewalk is just as bad as not moving the snow. And so if you have vegetation that interferes with the use of the sidewalk, do something with it, trim it up and make it look nice and make the sidewalks fully usable. I can walk behind my wife if I have to when we get to those areas, but people that are, have accessibility issues need the full use of that sidewalk too, so clean up the sidewalks, and that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Steve?
I thought you were going to say you could walk behind your wife, and the branch would come in and smack you in the head.
No, she loves me enough that she doesn't do the quick release, but I appreciate your observation. That could happen.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I have a couple of things. There was a gal that sent Craig and I a letter about chickens, and I think it's time that we address the chicken ordinance, it comes up time and time again. It's not reinventing the wheel, I think it's something Eleanor could handle very well, and I think it should handle, if we approve it, we approve, if we don't, we don't, but it's time that we take the chicken ordinance and put it to bed either way.
Jim, one thing, if the Eleanor Committee takes the chicken ordinance, we have to have them decide which came first.
And the other note over from the peanut gallery down there, I was, you know, and it was brought up earlier in our work session about stuff going on in Marshall, I was driving around today, because we started framing up another house, and Southwest, West Central, their, their buildings, I believe their building's going well, and I drove by, like you said, the airport where the SNR, the maintenance facilities going up in Quick Trip, I don't, they amazed, they just pop out of the ground. You leave town for a weekend and the thing's just about done. There's a lot of good things happening in Marshall, a lot of stuff being built again, and I, it's just a great thing to see. It's a testament to the growth in Marshall, and there's a lot of good stuff going on in Marshall. If you don't see it, just take a tour around Marshall, not in your golf cart, because they haven't approved those yet.
But you can in your side-by-side if you're.
In your side-by-side, so, and that's all, Bob, you can.
See?
I don't have anything.
No.
Just a couple of things. First off, on the backyard chicken egg production, the, Jim, you are correct, this has been discussed for quite a while, the, and we've been one of those cities that hasn't addressed it, hasn't allowed it. The Legislative Ordinance Committee would be the committee that would propose the ordinance, but I, in my view, the, there's some other things that really should be considered before it gets to Legislative Ordinance, and I'd be in favor of maybe a small work group of folks that have expertise in either animal production or disease transmission, because we also have avian influenza that has been transmitted in the, in, you know, to humans. And there's some other just issues, like what happens with the chickens when they're spent, when they're done laying soup? Are they destroyed? Are they, what happens to them? So there's some, there's some production issues that I think aren't in the expertise wheelhouse of Legislative Ordinance Committee. There are other things that are, like some of the things that our former intern reported on at the last meeting, like neighborhood issues, and should there be sign-off from neighborhoods, neighbors that are adjoining properties? So, so I would be in favor of, you know, perhaps a kind of an expert group to provide some additional background to the Legislative Ordinance Committee before the Legislative Ordinance Committee then brings this, you know, takes that up.
Yeah, I, I could agree with that, I just think we don't need to reinvent the wheel and drag it out for six months. I, I think these folks, because honestly, there's chickens out there, and I think it's time that we just decide if we're going to have them in town legally or illegally, quite frankly. And we just need to get it done and not do it, as Craig would say, at the speed of state.
The other issue that, as a council, we'll need to address is the cannabis licensing, because we've all followed this in the League of Cities, has provided our, the webinar with the Office of Cannabis Management, and I've been participating in a work group from the League of Cities that has been talking about a number of things. But we know that folks can apply to the Office of Cannabis Management, and if they are an approved applicant, then they then come to a community to register and see if they're in compliance with our zoning provisions, which is in the process of being, being developed. We have a moratorium until December thirty-first, and the approved licenses aren't going to be in place until the first quarter of 2025, so we're okay then. But we, we as a council need to determine, are we going to put a limitation on the number of establishments that would, would dispense cannabis? The legislation does, has been approved by the legislature, sets a minimum of one per twelve-thousand-five-hundred, and because we are close to fourteen-thousand, that means our minimum that we have to allow is two establishments. And then if we would have our own city-owned dispensary, which is a whole different consideration, that does not count on those two. Now, you don't have to set a limitation, or you can delegate the limit, any limitation to the county, which some small communities are doing at this point, and then the county sets the limit. And they would have the same limit as far as one per twelve-thousand-five-hundred, because they're over twenty-five-thousand, that would mean three. But our limitation stands alone, okay? I probably made that too confusing, it's, now, this is a future, probably a work session.
And you didn't make it too confusing, but so every, every municipal's like, I believe Ballton still has one, I admit if they don't, but every small town has a municipal, they will also be allowed to sell cannabis too, from what I understood, correct?
That is correct, however, they would need to put an application in, have an approved application, and that application would involve things like the site security and the, you know, what is their business plan and that type of thing.
Well, I'm just using the potential, so we could potentially have, and I don't know how many municipals we have in Lyon County, but potentially you could have five, six of these municipally-owned ones in Lyon County then, correct?
Plus their three.
Plus the three.
Yes.
I'm, I'm just running through my mind how this, since you brought it up in the meeting.
Right, so, you know, there's a lot of complexities to this, and, you know, we could get into a long discussion about that, but it would probably be good to have a work session with.
I agree.
Also is the, you know, information that will be from the webinar that was Office of Cannabis Management had on, on Friday, they will be having the live link on that that will be shared, so, so for some homework, you know, council members can watch that, and it's, it's actually pretty informative, so. Okay. With that, that's all that I can think of right now, so we'll move along then to staff reports. Sharon?
Just to follow up on cannabis, and I know I, you brought this forward to staff, so I appreciate you prodding us on this because time flies, but we were thinking of August twenty-seventh, having a work session on cannabis, and Pam Whitmore would be on-site on this particular day to kind of present an overview and next steps, so we'll have Stephen set up a calendar appointment. Pardon me?
That would be after council meeting, correct? Because we have the budget one in the afternoon.
Sure. Good catch. All right, so that's when we'll take that up, and August twenty-third, we're working on ceremonial groundbreaking for the new aquatic park. There has been a lot of interest thus far in bidding. We're contemplating the bid opening date. I guess there's at least two other bid opening dates for aquatic centers that same day, so it might be financially advantageous to amend or change the, the bid opening. It would not change the September tenth Aquatic Center Council action item, so just stay tuned for that, but that's something we'll take advice from, from our engineering staff and also from Stockwell. In addition, you probably saw it. In addition, you probably saw it National Night Out, if you were there, that the city gave away two trees, thanks to Greenwood Nursery. We will be working this month and into September on a tree purchase rebate program and also a tree removal rebate program. It's going to be kind of similar to water softener rebate program, where people have to provide an invoice in order to get, to get the rebate, but this is through the DNR Relief Grant, which the city was awarded last year, and that was part of that grant narrative that we said we were going to do. So we're kind of looking forward to kicking that off, and hopefully we have some good interests. Trees are really expensive, so it's not going to cover maybe a lot, but it'll hopefully help those that are kind of maybe thinking about making some changes with, with their trees. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Not a lot tonight to update you on, but the, we have been hearing from our seal coat contractor that they plan to be in town on August 23rd. That's tentative and weather-dependent, so we'll see how that goes, but trying to get them in and the seal coating work done before school starts, Tiger Drive is on the list, there'll be some impacts to the high school there, so we'll continue to monitor that. Planning Commission meets on Wednesday night, and Sharon mentioned water softeners. If your water softener is over 15 years old, consider replacement with a $500 rebate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Do we have a report from the city attorney's office?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, very good. We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda. You have the administrative brief for information items, the bus shelter project, any comments you want to make on that, Jason?
Not a lot. In the packet, there's a map that shows the locations, as well as they're, they're written out, but it's a cooperative project with UCAP Transit, funded entirely by UCAP Transit, city engineering staff providing engineering design and project administration services on their behalf. We do have an agreement with them where they pay 16% of project costs for engineering services.
And UCAP Transit also was awarded a grant to provide six propane-powered buses, so that's good.
Yeah.
Good. The remaining items on the agenda, the reported on our cash and investment, our listing of building permits, and our listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by C to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.